Good evening and welcome to the April 5th regular meeting for the School Committee for the Town of Foxborough. Before we get started this evening, Ms. Ladani just stepped away for one moment, and Mr. Ruder will be a few minutes late. So I just want to acknowledge that we actually do have a quorum of the School Committee present. We're just not all sitting at the table. And Ms. Ladani is back. So now we do have a quorum. So I did not notice as we start all our meetings with open public comment, I did not see that anyone had signed in to make a comment. So again, we certainly encourage public participation in our meetings. And if you do want to participate, we ask you to sign at the beginning. We also solicit submissions to our community inbox through the Foxborough Public Schools. So next on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have minutes from the March 22nd meeting. Did anyone have any questions or edits or comments on those minutes?
I did not. I'd move to approve the minutes of March 22nd, 2022.
Thank you very much.
My second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Flying right through. Next on the agenda, Dr. Berdus, your update, please.
All right. I will start out with our COVID update as I have in past meetings. It's been really encouraging to continue to see low numbers. Even at the town level, we've gone from a substantial rate to a low rate with only 14 cases in the town. And we see even mirrored in the school, we only have seven cases currently in the schools. With the vaccination rates, it's, I think, at a point to where we're not going to see huge shifts in those numbers. You see maybe a 1% or a 2% increase in some of the schools. But at this current date for the high school, we still remain at 81% for the Ahearn. We're at 73% for the Burl. With the preschool, we're at 48%, but not excluding the preschool, as we know that they're not eligible. That's 63%, which is the same for the Igo Elementary, and it's 64% for the Taylor Elementary School. So those numbers have stayed pretty consistent. Fortunately, we're continuing to see really low numbers as far as the other positive cases. And spring is here, which is exciting. We've got spring sports that have started yesterday with games and matches, and will continue this week. And the weather is cooperating so far, so that's really exciting. The other updates, we have ELA for MCAS that's taking place this week and next week. As a reminder, math and science does not take place until May. The MICA Festival, we hosted that this weekend at the high school, and our students performed, not surprisingly, exceedingly well. We had a number of gold medals for our concert choir, our symphony orchestra, and our concert band, and a silver medal for our treble choir. So congratulations to them. It was so exciting to be at their concert last Thursday evening, and they just, they sounded wonderful, so I'm not surprised at all that they fared so well with the MICA Festival and so many districts that were here this weekend. So that was fantastic. The other update that I have would be with our Assistant Superintendent search. We've come to a point to where we're going to need to hold a special school committee meeting next week for that recommendation. So I don't have a name for you at this point, but that will need to be scheduled for next week. I know Janet has reached out to see about scheduling that special school committee meeting. So other than that, questions? Those are the extent of my update.
When's your last? When's your next meeting for the, oh, sorry. Did I cut?
No, no. I was listening.
For the Assistant Super? You're still, I know you're doing a lot of vetting, but is it still going on this week?
No, we have final, we have completed interviews with a larger group, which is the full administration, central office, principals, and then I've had individual interviews with each of them. That actually took place yesterday. And so in the process of making that decision and the recommendation for you for next week, and trying to get that scheduled for Tuesday evening at 6:00.
6:00 PM. Okay.
Congratulations.
So we're getting, we're getting closer.
Thank you. Big relief.
Yes.
So, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the update?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berdus. Next on the agenda is information about the Spanish exchange program. Dr. Mello, Dr. Berdus, did you want to make the introductions?
Sure. We'll invite our folks up to the guest table. This is really exciting to have them here to be talking about travel, where it has not taken place particularly internationally in a very long time.
It's been a while.
And I will let Senorita do introductions as we get started, but you're going to be hearing about really getting back to some more normalcy and what we've done in the past.
I think, I think before you get started seeing it on the agenda item, I can imagine that we all had a smile on our faces seeing that this was actually an agenda item that we could discuss this year. So very excited to hear what you guys have to share with us tonight.
And we have Mrs. Myers-Pacla, as far as the principal's sitting back there as well, but she's not up at the guest table.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. We are also very excited to be here. I am Christine Smith, and I am one of the co-advisors of the exchange program at the Spanish Exchange Program at Foxborough High School. And I am here with my co-advisor, Irene Titmus, who has also had a long history of participating in the exchange programs at the high school. We came with a few parents. We're very excited and can't wait to have them share their personal experiences with you. We have Mrs. Quinn, and we have Mrs. Jerry Penders with us. And we're also going to have a special Zoom in guest, which will be Nick Penders, who is also going to share a personal experience with us. So this will be a nice, a nice little memory lane journey for us all, I think.
That's cool. Should we get some tissues?
All, all good vibes.
Okay.
Because I'm already feeling like crying.
Okay. Look, I'm crying, I cry at the drop of a hat right now, so I get it.
So we're here tonight to ask for the School Committee's support and approval for running the Spanish exchange next year in the 2022-23 school year. We are not proposing a new program. This is the same Spanish exchange program that was begun by our dear friend, Ms. Beverly Lord, who's a former language teacher and a school committee member herself. So this program has existed for over 25 years now, and it's a longstanding relationship with the school in the town of Chiriveya in Spain. So prior to this evening, we've provided you with some promotional information about the trip that can also be found on the World Language Department website. Within that information, you can also see some sample itineraries of what it's like to host, be a host family, and what it's like to travel and participate in the exchange. So from that, you get an idea of the structure of the trip. And like I said, tonight, we're also going to get the personal side of the trip. We, up until this point so far this year, we have held a parent meeting, we have promoted the trip, we have taken some surveys, and we have at least about a solid 15 families, I would say, interested in participating. We have been in touch with Spain all year, this year, staying in close touch with them, and they've begun their preparations as well. And they also have between 15 and 20 families who are interested in participating in the exchange. So even though the trip seems like it might be far away, we, Spain really needs to get underway because they'll be here at the end of September. And before they leave in June for the school year, they're going to want to have their plane tickets purchased. We make all of the pairings so that our students can begin communicating with their partners through social media. And it's a really nice beginning to the exchange that can, they can really get to know each other and actually meet each other's parents through social media before we go. And that all happens in April, May, June. And then we also prepare the trips for our Spanish visitors when they come. We do that by June as well. So lots to be done. And so before we go any further, do we have any questions about the structure of the trip that I can answer for you? If not, I'm going to pass it on to my families. Okay.
Where, actually, I was wondering, where are the 15, sorry. Where are the families coming from? Is there a range of, in Spain?
Yep. So Valencia is the city, and it's a small town right outside of the city called Chiriveya.
Thank you.
So it's about.
All the same school? Are they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, cool. That's the thing I missed. Sorry about that.
Yeah. And again, they've been doing this for a long time, and it's lots of times, you know, siblings over there, just like here, they'll have, you know, siblings will participate or cousins.
Nice.
Excellent. So I'd like to actually introduce one of our first guests this evening. We have Mrs. Lisa Quinn. Her daughter Lexi Quinn participated back in 2016 and 2017, and I thought she could give us perspective of the relationship that those two students have had and how well it went for them.
Happy to. So hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I'll just, I think I was invited here to give a part.
Just going to move the mic up a little.
Move it up. Okay.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, we're getting a signal, Paul. What's the signal?
Closer.
You need a little bit closer.
They're just dragging the whole platform toward you and just talking.
There you go.
Not used to microphones, so is that better?
That's awesome. That's great.
Okay, so we'll go with that. So yeah, I just wanted to give a parent testimonial. So as Ms. Smith said, Lexi went on the Spanish exchange program. She was a junior in the high school at the time. We welcomed her, I will call her Spanish sister Raquel, to our home for about 10 days in October, and they truly formed kind of a sister relationship. I'm actually still in touch with Raquel on the WhatsApp, so we check in every now and then. She calls me her, you know, American mom. And, you know, Lexi has her Spanish family. So she went over in February, and she spent 10 days there. You know, they were wonderful people. We ended up FaceTiming a couple times, so we got to meet the parents, even though my Spanish is limited, my husband's is more limited. Their English was about the same, so, you know, the girls did a really good job. But, you know, it was just a really wonderful experience, I will say, talking about the pairings. We didn't know who Lexi would get. Lexi is a little bit of a reserved, kind of quiet personality, but I have to say, they did a really wonderful job. Raquel was a great fit. She kind of blended right into our family. Lexi felt very comfortable going over there after having met Raquel here. I think it was really nice that when all the kids came over, we did a lot of group events with them. So Lexi not only met Raquel really well, but got to know all the other Spanish students. And so much so that when she graduated from the high school, she and three friends planned a trip themselves to go over for about three and a half weeks, and they went back to Spain. They explored Barcelona a little bit on their own because they were comfortable navigating around Spain, having been there. And then they spent probably two-thirds of the trip back with their host families and all of their friends, visiting, you know, deepening their relationships and things. And that was a great experience for her. And I will say, actually today, she's a junior in college, and she's actually in Santiago, Chile, and she's studying abroad. And that was a really important part of her college search, was to find a school that would support her in going abroad, and even more so in finding another Spanish-speaking country to immerse herself in the culture. So I really do think this program kind of, you know, got her going there and got her excited and interested. So I am a big proponent of it. As you can probably tell, I would love my sophomore at the high school to be able to go through the program again, so I hope it's something that can carry forward and pick up again. So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but that's what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That was excellent.
We are an easy crowd. Again, we're so excited about doing this again, so.
So next, we have Mrs. Nada Jerry Penders, whose son Nicholas participated in the most recent exchange of 2018, 2019.
Thank you. Some of you know me and know that I can be a little chatty, so I wrote it down, and I timed it so that I would not get off track like Lisa does. It's like perfect off-the-cuff thing. I wrote it down. So good evening, and thank you so much to the committee for giving me the opportunity to speak about the Spanish exchange program at Foxborough High. I've written my remarks to keep me to the time limit requested, as I could speak about this program for hours. So we participated in this program from 2018 to 2019 and hosted our student, Nakor Olmos Caballero. He came to us in the fall, and our son Nicholas went to Spain in April. Excuse me, went to February vacation. We're trying to push it to April. Can you see that? Because Alex is playing basketball in February, and if the exchange got pushed to April, he could go. So that was my subtle, like, would love it to push to. So as you can imagine, a trip of 20 students cross-culturally requires an excessive amount of planning in detail, and Senoritas Smith, Abey, Titmus, and her entire department take this very seriously. They have a long reciprocity with the specific town in Spain and took great care in pairing our families. So we have a really sporty house, and we were given a very sporty kid. And one of my favorite moments was when we took Nakor to Nick's soccer game, and he's the goalie. Nick made this huge save in the goal. Nakor stands up, screams, "That's my American!" And starts high-fiving the whole crowd. And because it was soccer, he was really engaged in it and very proud. So having an exchange student in your house and in your home for a week, 10 days, is something that I wish that every student at Foxborough High could experience. There's nothing like it, and it fosters a sense of wonder, inquiry, and interest in the world, gives them the spark of travel, language, and adventure in such a supportive way. We have so many memories of that week. All the cultural aspects aside, there were also hilarious things that we take for granted. For example, our daily trip to the Shaw's cereal aisle. So to this day, Nakor still can't believe that Cookie Crisp is a breakfast item. And so when Nick went to Spain in February, half of his suitcase was Cookie Crisp. So we took it out of the boxes and stuffed half of his bag with bags of Cookie Crisp for his, his student. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I think he may be joining us to tell you his experiences if we manage the technology cross-state. So hey, honey, take it away.
He made it.
Everyone, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Perfectly. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about my experience in Spain and also like hosting Nakor as an exchange student. So I think, A, the trip is amazing, and I am still in contact with my host family and also Nakor, who is our student. Actually, this summer, I went back and visited and stayed with them again for another week while our family was on vacation in Spain. So I spend plenty of time texting with him. Like, we, I've learned a lot about WhatsApp because that's what they use, and so I've gotten a lot of practice for my Spanish. And the exchange trip is one of the reasons why I am minoring in Spanish now, here still in college. So I'm a freshman at George Washington University, if any of you don't know. So I just wanted to say that I think it's a great opportunity for any future students at Foxborough to get experience with language, experience in a different country, see a completely different part of the world, and get to be immersed in that. And I think it's a very special opportunity that a lot of these students can have, and it will be, it would be great for, for this program to continue post-COVID, so.
Thank you.
Any questions for Nick?
No.
No, that worked beautifully. And yes, we did not know where Nick was for a week. His Spanish was that good. We were in the airport, and our plane was delayed, and so we said, get yourself to Valencia, because we were stuck wherever we were stuck. And he got himself internally, and then he took two trains to meet us back in Malaga, and we really didn't hear from him for seven days while he was happily with his Spanish family. And so, pretty confident.
Hi, Nick.
Hola, Nicholas. Gracias amigo.
Good night.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you so much for joining us tonight. It's really nice to see you. I'm sure you're doing well at George Washington University.
Yes, thank you.
So that ends our presentation this evening. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
I don't have a question. I just think that this is wonderful. I know for myself, everyone kind of telling stories, it's bringing back memories for me, that high school, which I don't want to admit how long ago it was, my parents had a German exchange student, we actually had several, and he attended my wedding. We're still talk many years later. So I do understand how important this type of program is and how life-changing it really can be. So thank you for sharing your stories. Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
How do you handle medical care? Not that you need it much, I'm just curious.
What? I'm sorry?
Medical care.
Medical care, what's the system there?
They have a wonderful system in, in Spain. In fact, once when we went over there, I got, I got a little bit of food poisoning and had to go to a clinic, but it was smooth, it was easy. There's really not a lot you need to, I mean, usually we make sure our insurance covers us over there anyway, but.
Right.
But it was just a really easy experience for me over there, so. And I just want to take advantage of this opportunity to say thank you so much for the support that you've given this program over the years. I'm only here because I wanted to support the program. This is my last year, you probably know, and I just want to take advantage of the opportunity to say thank you to all of you, and it's nice to see you again, Rich.
You get that every meeting.
Well, I know that. Well, I was going to thank the three testimonials, so thank you for testemoning from your heart and from your mind and your experience. But I do want to thank Christine and Irene for all the years that you've done this. People need to realize that you, leading it, but the entire faculty at the Foreign Language Department puts a lot of time and effort above and beyond the school day to make this all work, to coordinate everything, make sure all the students are planned for and where they need to be. So thank you all for the years and years of dedicated service to our kids. Really, thank you.
Thank you.
It's my pleasure.
I have a quick clarifying question. Do you, as teachers, accompany the students and go along the trip with them?
Yes.
That is pretty amazing. Oh, that's awesome.
Just for clarification, I won't be there next year. Sad to say, but, but yes, we have gone.
And there are, at this point, there are good friends, you know, the teachers that are part of the exchange, so.
For sure.
You know, our homes are their homes and vice versa. So like I said, when I say we've been in touch all year, we've been in touch all year, as well as last year and the year before, even when we don't travel. It's, yeah, it's a nice friendship.
That's great. We had the good fortune of hosting, I guess, the last group of French students that came over right before everything shut down, and we are still in contact with that young man that came to, that came to visit us. And my son, who did not get a chance to go to France because of everything shutting down, is hoping when he goes to school, he wants to, he wants to spend a semester abroad in France, and is hoping that they can at that point, for just the same reason. It's, you know, just that opportunity, having someone in your home and watching, learning about the grocery store always fascinates. We went to Whole Foods. We went to Whole Foods, and that was just like, I think, the Wonderland of Food, I think, is what he, was what he was calling it when he was there. So it's just very different. So again, I understand, you know, a little bit more firsthand, based on our experience, what it's like and, and the benefit of it. So really thrilled that we're back to this point, like I said, so thank you.
There's a lot of interest to also continue with the French exchange, and that will happen as well at some point.
That's terrific. Thank you. What do we need to do tonight? We need approval. So from a budget perspective, the, the trip is funded solely by families.
Correct.
So there's no budget impact to us. We just need to do approval because of.
Being a school sponsor.
Right. Okay. So it's just for sponsorship. So thank you. If there are any other questions or comments, can we have a motion for approval for the program?
I'd move to approve the Spanish exchange program for 22, 2022-23 as presented. Second.
Thank you. All in favor? There you go. Thank you guys very much. Thank you for all the work. Exciting, good stuff.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Goodness, seeing you all. So much. She just said adios.
Dr. Berdus, Dr. Mello, we're going to stay with, we're going to stay with y'all?
Sure. I would like to invite Mr. Jim Donovan to come up to our guest table this evening. Also in our audience, we have our principals, Ms. Myers-Pacla, Ms. Campbell, Mr. Stanton. We also have Mr. Corey Michaelazek. We have Mr. Hyer. We have Karen Frazier from the middle school as well, to be here in support of Jim's introduction. And then also, at the same time, many, well, as far as Michelle, you were on that 16-member committee that was led by Dr. Mello, and all of the work that went into that committee was very extensive. Do you want to give just kind of a reminder of what that timeline looked like?
Sure. So as we do, hi, Jim. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
As we do with all of our search committees, we have two nights of previewing our candidates and drafting our attributes that we're looking for in our next leader of whatever position it is. So in this case, the high school principal. And coming up with the questions that we feel are most salient to the issues that we're facing right now, as we know the landscape of education is always changing, the needs of our schools are always changing. So each person on that committee was able to formulate and pose a question that really represented their perspective as a stakeholder, and that's why we have a cross-section of all different stakeholders. So it's a very intimidating room to walk into. I'm sure you can attest to that, Jim.
It was a big room, yeah.
But it's a very thorough process that we're really proud of, and we were really excited to get to know you, and I think that's what brings you here tonight, and a lot of other things, but yes.
So just as, as by way of introduction, Jim has a longstanding career in education. He has been in education for 20 years, actually, with the Duxbury Public Schools. And that rich history of education became very apparent through those interviews. I know with Michelle being on that, you heard that firsthand, and then also.
Yes, I did.
Ms. Campbell, she was also on that committee, as well as Ms. Frazier and Mr. Michaelazek. And throughout that process, I also sat in just to, just to do the listening piece and then the further interviews, along with the resume that you have in your packet for Jim. The background that he has, that he brings, is a very rich background in music education. It is teaching all grade levels, focusing his teaching career, and then also his administrative career so far as an assistant principal, and then most recently and currently as the last five years as the principal of Duxbury High School. So his background that you see in the resume, you can see that, but I'd just like to share some of the comments that came from, whether it was his site visit, or recommendations, or interviews, or, or phone calls, and, and all of those to describe Jim. First and foremost, very student-centered, an exceptional educational leader, extremely knowledgeable, approachable, extremely collaborative. His visibility, he's everywhere, is what we were told. High visibility, whether it's with students, whether it was staff and families and the community, he is everywhere. A natural ability to draw people in is another description, an excellent communicator, open-minded, an active, an authentic listener, a great principal, very proactive, smooth with running all aspects of the school. So that right there is high order, when we think about everything that goes into a high school. But really well-versed in all aspects of the school and significant contributions over the years to Duxbury. That came out loud and clear, his work, his passion and his dedication for what he has done in the last 20 years and those significant contributions. And that he has been also a leader in the area of professional development and technology integration in his past as well. Been described multiple times, as I've heard, as the real deal. Just, just a great person, but the real deal, so.
Everybody's favorite part is to sit and listen to all the nice things.
Very humbling experience.
Those in the back, he's taking it very well, but his eyes are a tad closed sometimes. Stands strong.
But really talking about, like, the complete package, when we think about skills and his background and what he's going to bring in a positive addition to the culture of any organization, but really extremely committed to the school that he leads. And so we're so fortunate to have you here this evening because big shoes to fill with Mrs. Myers-Pacla as she retires at the end of June after 10 years back in Foxborough. So we're really excited that you're here this evening and that we know that you'll be just as committed to Foxborough as you've already shown that throughout the multiple interviews and processes that we've had here. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. It certainly is a pleasure to meet you. Thank you for being here. We've all participated in this process for multiple roles throughout the, throughout the district and know how thorough it is, and hope that the process for you was friendly[1657.61] and, um, hope that the process for you was, um, friendly and cordial, and you felt that you could bring your best self to that, and, and it got you to this point, so we're thrilled that you're here. I'm gonna open it up to the committee for any questions.
Thank you for being here.
Oh, yeah, no, and I.
We're excited to have you.
Well, thank you very much.
And I should, sorry, and I, you're, you're gonna remind me I did a terrible job. I don't normally sit back. I should sit forward. I think my energy's off. Uh, we should ask you to introduce yourself and tell us a little more about, before we ask you questions.
Well, I just wanted to, so. So thank you very much, Dr. Berdos, for that, uh, introduction. I, I just wanted to introduce myself to say hello. My name is Jim. I, uh, love what I do. Uh, I have been in Duxbury for a very long time. I love our district. But I'm thrilled to be able to come to Foxborough. Uh, I've been in the district, uh, three times over the last couple of weeks. I got to spend a day at the high school, uh, almost two weeks ago, and it was an awesome day. Um, I got, I've met with students, uh, parents, teachers, uh, school staff, um, and every interaction I had in the big, from, from the big first committee, uh, to the one-on-one conversations, it's just been awesome. And so I am thrilled about the opportunity. I'm really excited, uh, for the, over the course of the spring, to get an opportunity to work with, uh, Mr. Myers-Pacla, who is a, um, who I've known for almost twenty years, who's an old friend, and, um, and Dr. Berdos to build an, uh, entry plan, uh, so that I can, uh, be prepared and, uh, ready to go on, on July one, and spend some of the spring getting to know the community better and the school better. And I'm just very, very excited to be here. And, uh, I also wanted to thank all the, uh, everyone who was on the, the various committees, from the parents, and I've met a number of school committee members over the course of that day, uh, all the principals and central office staff who were there, um, and, uh, admin assistant staff, and the teachers and kids, and everyone who, uh, um, invested their time in the process. It showed, it was very clear how much people care about Foxborough High School, and care about the school, and they care about the community, and, uh, that is something, uh, that I connected with right away. And so, uh, I'm thrilled to be able to come, as I said before, and to start, uh, and to get to know more about the community over the course of the spring, uh, and to join the team here in the district, um, and all the, the principals and teachers, uh, district-wide, but especially at the high school. I'm happy to answer any questions.
No. Any questions?
Thank you. I was just gonna say, we're very excited to have you, um, and looking forward to it very much.
Thank you very much.
Jacob Grace, have you had a chance? Cause you're both at the high school.
I feel terrible. My back is to you. I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, no, it's very nice to meet you, and, I mean, as we were talking about, you've got really big shoes to fill, but it seems like you're up to it, so, um, that's good, and we're very excited to have you.
Uh, yeah, for the most part, uh, what Grace said, I mean, it is really exciting to have you, and, uh, yeah, thanks.
And they are tough judges. They are tough judges, so pretty high praise, right there. So thank you. Sarah, Brent?
Thank you for being here.
Nice to meet you.
A stock question for new leaders coming in, uh, is, for me anyways. I know you're, you know, you were researching the district, met a lot of new people, so I don't expect a ton of detail, but just, um, as we, uh, transition out of a couple of tough years, how do you, from the bit you've gleaned, how do you see yourself coming in to, um, assess the various differences where kids might be? Given that, that maybe they've, 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 some have continued to develop and grow socially, emotionally, and academically over these last couple of years. Some have had more challenges through no fault of their own. And just, yeah, anything you can think of, either from Duxbury or what you see in place already in, in Foxborough, how do you see, uh, getting a handle on that stuff over the upcoming year and years?
Yeah, well, uh, it's a, um, it's a very good, good question. I think one of the things I took away from my site visit and from the, uh, interviews here is that there's a real priority on, uh, um, introducing, uh, really strong MTSS interventions and, uh, at the high school level. And, um, there's some really good research. This is, it's not all, MTSS isn't all academic. And a lot of it is that social-emotional, um, supports and learning and access to psych services and guidance services. And so that's something that we're spending a lot of time looking at in, in our school, is trying to figure out ways that we can increase access without taking away from class time and creating compounding issues.
Sure.
And, uh, that was something that in, uh, some moment ago, was a, was a conversation that came up multiple times throughout the day, um, in, in the interviews, and it's something that, uh, I've thought a lot about over the last couple of years because of the district and the role of an in, uh, and we're struggling with the two. And so I'm eager to start, um, to listen to how, uh, to the work that's been started here, um, at the high school, and, uh, how we can make that happen, um, in a way that is effective for kids, um, and creates opportunities without, um, making, getting into class or staying in class more difficult.
Sure.
So, um, I think that's, that's gonna be a key for all high schools. But it seems like, uh, from, one of the take, as I said, my big takeaway was that a lot of that groundwork has been laid here, and it's something that, that teachers are really, uh, eager, uh, to get to work in making that a part of the, um, kind of like the marrow of the high school, I guess, is the, the way to put it. So, um, uh, so I'm eager to start that.
No, thank you for the context, and speaking as a parent and, and educator, uh, for a time, uh, that focusing on that least restrictive environment and trying to meet kids where they're at, I think is, 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 uh, no small feat. So thank you for, uh, your attention to that as, as you, as you, as you step in. And having sat on a couple of the hiring committees, it's, it's a gauntlet, and to hear all the praise that came from them and almost the unanimity of support from all levels across the district and all the stakeholders that are involved in that, I was just really, really impressed. Not having sat on the committee, but I trust them, I trust the process, and I couldn't be happier that you're coming, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I could not be happier either. I'm pumped, very excited.
That's great. Thank you. You guys good?
I'll just say thank you again for being here. Um, I'm very fortunate to know Jim some in my professional life, and I know he's very well, you're very well-respected amongst your colleagues in the area of, of Duxbury and what's all around you in the South Shore, so, uh, really great opportunity for us to have you leading our people, uh, bringing that, bringing that to the table for us. So thanks for taking that challenge with us and, and coming aboard. Be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wants to say it.
No, I'm not, I have a question.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, I have a question. So, um, I think, you know, probably in your research, we, uh, about the, you know, um, our district, uh, we like to think that we have a very collaborative relationship with our school leaders, with our administration as a school board. In your assessment, are there any things that are concerning about, excuse, excuse me, concerning to you about the environment that you're walking into, about the district, about how we work together? Are you, have you had a chance to, can we answer any questions for you about how we prioritize or how we do our work as a school committee?
Um, I, I think the, uh, we actually really, um, did not really talk much about the school committee. I mean, a lot of it, uh, the questions were really high school-focused, and that's really what I was, especially in the site visit, learning about what the, uh, you know, everything from the layout of the building and the renovations from a couple of years ago to how it's, uh, organized and the schedule, and the, how the schedule's linked with, uh, the Ahearn and, uh, sharing staff, and that's really kind of where, um, uh, and certainly all the one-on-one conversations I was having with people around the building. So I have not, um, even considered, uh, that yet.
I think that's, well, I, so that's good, right? That's a good thing. That means that we're, in my opinion, that means we're being successful. Because that means that our building leadership feels like they're getting support through our administration, which is where we should be focusing. So that's a perfect answer. I, I promise you I wasn't trying to set you up, even though it seems that way. Okay? That, again, that means that, to me, that means that we're doing our job and making sure that the people in their roles have the, access to the right resources. So perfect, that's great. Um, I'm thrilled that you want to trust Foxborough with this piece, with this, with this next piece of your career. I'm very excited. Um, I know that other people that have known you in other ways are very excited about you coming to Foxborough, so thank you so much for trusting us.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I'm just thrilled. I'm really excited to be, coming on board.
Great.
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Chair?
Please.
I'm glad that you elaborated on the rest of the process, because there are multiple rounds. And so many people got to meet you, and, and everything that everyone said is right on par, that people were excited. And we, as a committee, were very excited about your experience with MTSS, because this committee knows that we've been working hard on that. We always start by saying we have a really supportive school committee, and we're really fortunate for that. So I think what you're stepping into is a place where you have everything you need to be successful, whether it's a human resource or a resource in the classroom. But one of the things that I thought was very special about you and should be mentioned here tonight, and I want to say thank you for picking Foxborough, is that you only applied to Foxborough, and you wanted to be in Foxborough. And I just think that's a really important distinction among candidates who are out looking, that you, you only applied here. So we're very happy to have you, um, and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
We'll see lots more of you, I'm sure, so.
Oh, yes.
And again, thank you to everyone who participated in the process. Michelle, thank you for representing the school committee. And all the parents, um, and faculty and staff that participated. We know it's time-consuming, we know how thorough the process is. So thank you all very much for your involvement.
Thank you for principals and central office.
Welcome.
Next on the agenda is the Special Education Programs update.
We'll invite Mr. Michaelazek up to the table as the Director of Student Services. I've just noticed that we didn't have his name on the agenda. Does not mean you get to leave. Cause he's going to be joined up here with our fabulous special education staff. This is part of, um, your goals, our district's goals, as a reminder with school committee, when we do that goal-setting in July every year, and the importance of having a special education update at this time of year. And I know how hard that they have worked. Um, they always work hard, but particularly when you think about the last two years and all that we've done and they have done, in particular, to meet our student needs. And you're going to see that as they present kind of a state-of-the-state in special education this evening. So Corey, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, committee members. Thank you, first and foremost, thank you for allowing this agenda item to be kind of a yearly topic. And so last year, going into this year, I realized that, um, the focus of these conversations and, and this, and this presentation is around where, where are we with special education, right, across the district? And so further in the presentation, you have members at each level across our district who has, who have led the way when it comes to the work that we've kind of been doing the last two years since I've been here. And so I want to publicly thank, um, the five here with me who have been by my side since I've started. Sherry had just started this year, but, uh, we have really clicked as a group, as a cohesive unit, to ensure that, um, our students receive what they need and when they need it. And so a lot of this conversation, we'll talk about their respective roles at their respective levels, but I will start off with more, more of the overarching themes, if you will. I forgot the clicker.
I gave it to you.
I know. It's like you're on Zoom and you're a mute. I'm mute, two years later. Okay, so, um, some introductions. Corey Michaelazek, Director of Student Services.
Oh, you're not gonna introduce me?
Nope, you can.
That actually might be more fun if you introduce each other and tell like a story.
Diana Parm, the Preschool Coordinator.
Rose Farah, Elementary Team Chair.
Sherry Spicer, um, Middle School Team Chair.
Hi, Kim McVal, District-wide Team Facilitator, also the added district coordinator.
Emily Anderson, High School Special Education Department Chair.
Thank you. Just trying to make sure, uh, if you're gonna do a little more speaking, I think you might need to speak up a little bit more so that the, uh, microphone can pick you up for, um, cable. Thank you.
So our agenda here.
Good. It's everybody.
So, uh, the agenda tonight is really kind of going over our updates, um, when it comes to special education as a whole. This year was really, uh, the foundation-building year, and kind of rebuilding our foundation from the ground up when it comes to procedures, policies, um, and then into programming. And so from there, we'll talk about some family engagement opportunities that we've had, kind of engaged in, as well as, um, kind of moving forward and what that's gonna look like as we kind of enhance that capacity as well. A snapshot of our students, uh, in regards to, um, their educational placements within our buildings and our percentages across the district. Evaluations and caseloads, um, you know, our related service providers over here, the last meeting, um, and, and their work together with their high caseload numbers and evaluations. I really want to give a clear picture of where they are, where that stands. Specialized program updates. As you know, we did some restructuring last year. We continue to do some enhancements and some growth this year. And then, of course, um, some of our student support services, although, um, not entirely special education, but they do overlap quite a bit. Then around our inclusive practices and what we've been able to do there, and co-teaching and kind of shifting our model of service delivery, some of the professional development training our staff have been engaged in, as well as kind of our personal updates and, and areas that we've increased our own capacity within, within our district. So the first part is, um, over the summer, kind of the big, the big piece was taking a look at our proceed, process and procedural manual. DESI have come out with, um, a lot of advisories and guidances and, and updates to certain regulations and such, and so, um, that needed to be kind of redone, um, and have an electronic format. Uh, so kind of working through the summer, um, through our legal counsel and ensuring that our policies and procedures are matched to state and federal guidelines and, and regulations. And so that was a lot of the work that we kind of did this summer, and we really Foxborough-ized it, which means that this is the process and procedure in Foxborough, aligns the state and federal laws. And so really in a parent-friendly manner, in a family-friendly manner, staff-friendly manner. So it's a, it's an area of, it's, it's, it's really our guidebook when it comes to special education programming and things like that. Uh, the next piece was our specialized programs. So we have a number of specialized programs throughout the district who are high-quality programs. And I think what we didn't do a good job of, uh, was really, really showing what those programs do and what they offer, and the types of programming that's involved in our specialized programming. And so, uh, the specialized program guide was something that we started off last year, um, and kind of moved into this year in really identifying what our programs are, the student profiles that are within those programs, and of course, those program components that are part of them. Um, so that's, uh, something that is just really finalizing right now, and, and we'll be posting to the district website, which is something we're gonna work on this summer as far as what that website looks like and accessibility. Um, so that's the foundational work and kind of rebuilding our foundation. I'm just trying to click the next one, but it's not working.
Look it towards the, towards the window over there, yeah.
Okay, so, um, some of this work here, um, what we really did this year, and what I'm really proud of, is, is our co-teaching and inclusive, inclusion model, uh, within our district, kind of started off at the elementary level. And last year, what we did was, we had a group of Foxborough educators, um, at the elementary level, K to six, that participated in some really high-quality professional development training through Lisa Decker, who is a nationally-recognized, um, practitioner when it comes to inclusive schools and, and building inclusive classrooms and, and the co-teaching model. And so she's someone who I've worked with in the past for, for a number of years, um, and then had kind of brought it to Foxborough to, um, spend some time with our teachers and providing some training. So she visited us in September, um, she came back to us in February, um, and then she's coming back to us again in, in May. And so a lot of the work last year was around professional development and the training, and really providing our teachers with the skill sets to support our students in the classroom. And so this year, uh, we enhanced that a little bit, was, um, we had partnered with, I reached out to Noren and Mashpee Public Schools, similar districts, um, with similar programming, and kind of combined our efforts to provide the opportunity for our educators now to participate in the same type of training. It's new educators now, so our last year was a first cohort of educators, uh, now this year is a second cohort. And it's with, uh, Noren teachers, it's with Mashpee teachers, and there's about forty in, in total. And so I've been a part of those sessions. It's been really nice to hear what other districts are doing, how they approach inclusion, scheduling, those types of kind of logistics that, um, I can take back even, uh, into our own district here. But it's been a really rewarding experience for our teachers, um, and, and part of that is the embedded problems of practice that she offers. So, uh, Lisa is somebody who, any teacher could send her an email and say, I need this resource, I need this support. And she responds back to them, and she's a nationally-recognized person who, who devotes her time to Foxborough, and we've been able to, and fortunate enough to be able to kind of continue our work with her. And so a lot of the work this year has revolved really, really spearheaded by the IGO school and the staff there, and the, you know, general ed teachers and our specialty teachers who are really leading the way right now for us and kind of modeling for all the buildings. And so we're, we're to a point where we have districts now inquiring and wanting to visit. So we have a district coming on Thursday to visit and look at what we're doing with our programming and our co-teaching. And so now it's being recognized, but at the same time, uh, it's, it's come from the teachers, right? So part of the, the cohort last year we worked on was they, they all created one, three, and five-year plans for co-teaching. And so it's really centered around the teachers, what they felt comfortable with, and what they wanted to move forward with, and what they felt they needed. And so now we're expanding it this year to the Taylor and the Borough, and kind of expanding that at the elementary level. Next year, it'll be a seven-to-twelve model, and swap it, and working with our seventh and eighth grade, cause, you know, fifth and sixth at the Ahearn was also part of it, but, um, seventh and eighth, and then through the high school next year is we're gonna kind of flip that. And so just on the left is the flyer that we kind of put out, and then the middle is one of our special educators over at the, um, IGO. And just the, the level of expertise of our staff and, and our students in those classrooms are thriving when it comes to the academic learning, um, and they feel so well-supported, and, and the feedback that we receive from parents, from other educators, uh, has, has been great. And so the top right corner is Lisa Decker talking to one of the educators over at the Taylor, um, as she kind of visits our classroom, uh, our classrooms, and she's able to engage in students and talk with teachers, and really get from their perspective what they're looking for when it comes to kind of my level of support and our level of support to kind of enhance this work. And then the bottom right corner, um, another piece is that we've engaged with, um, some, some professional consultations that we'll talk about a little later, but, um, really taking a look at our specialized programming and ensuring that we have a consistent process of how students would, would potentially, um, require this type of programming, right? And so I think really making sure it's consistent pre-K to twelve. And so that's, you know, we even had a meeting this afternoon. It's a district-wide kind of team of our therapeutic programming to identify, uh, a referral process. Of course, it's, it's a team decision at the end of the day, but it's really a process that our staff are engaged in, um, to ensure that we are meeting those students' needs and that, that when we make that, you know, that educational placement decision, that it's appropriate, that it's driven by data, and it's driven by what we've done previously to that point. And so we've done a lot of that work. We've had about four or five meetings this year, um, and like I said, you know, we got more to go, uh, but it's a process, and so that's something that we're gonna kind of look at doing for all of our programming. And so that's Dr. Barry Plummer, who's kind of guiding us in this process. He's our clinical psychologist, who we'll talk about, like I said, a little further. It's the next piece, window, yeah. Okay, so, uh, professional consultative services. So what, um, in this district, we have, we use a lot of consultants, and we use a lot of consultants in the Office of Student Services. And so to streamline it, coming in realizing that some of them are doing kind of the same work, um, and so streamlining it to the point where we have a specific task and responsibility of each consultant that we're utilizing, right? So, for example, Lisa Decker is working with us on the co-teaching and inclusive practices, but at the same time, Dr. Barry Plummer is our clinical psychologist, who last year was with, with us monthly, this year, this year with us bi-weekly, next year moving to a little higher frequency, cause of the level of need that we're at. But, and what he's able to do is engage with families, uh, which is such an important component to what we do in our work on an everyday basis. And so sometimes when districts partner with consultants, the family engagement and component is missing, right? And so. And so Barry Plummer, Dr. Plummer, is able to engage in those families and have those really clinical-based conversations, and it's more of a support for families is how we have used it. And so there's student consultations, there's family consultations, and there's support for staff as well. And so utilizing him in that way, we use McLean Hospital and their school consulting services, and they're specifically around building our bridge programming that we're going to be talking about, that we started at the middle school and the high school this year. Of course, staffing is an issue and finding staff, but actually the framework and the procedures behind that and the re-entry process for students that are coming back from extended absences. So McLean has been kind of leading that work, working with Kim and the mental health team and kind of working there. In addition to that, you know, working with, just really streamlining our processes for things. And enhancing capacity and personnel, that's something that we kind of talked about a lot, and that's looking at providing, ensuring that we have high-quality staff in front of our kids. And so what we've done recently is we had two full-time occupational therapists with one full-time occupational therapist assistant. Part of the budget process, as you know, moving forward, we want to shift from a COTA to a third occupational therapist. And as you know, when I go over the data in a little bit, the amounts of evaluations, their responsibilities, team meetings, screeners for students, consultations with teachers, and the work that they're doing is a high level of work. And the level of service that comes from an OT versus a COTA is different. It's a high level of service, and so shifting that model. Another piece was, you know, bringing in our own district BCBA. Previously, the district had contracted with an outside agency on a per DM basis, if you will. And now we have someone that's kind of threaded within this district, full-time within this district, spends time in buildings in this district and working with staff over, you know, consulting with our specialized programming, overseeing behavior plans, those types of things, behavioral programming. And so that's been a nice shift for us, as well as last year, we had a part-time speech and language therapist at the middle school, a part-time speech and language therapist at the high school. The high school person had retired, and within the programs that they're working in, communication is the biggest area of need for those students. And so we hired a speech and language pathologist, really tied to our paid programming at the Ahern and at the Foxborough High School. So the intent is to really have a speech and language pathologist who's highly skilled in working with the biggest area of need of our students in that paid programming and to work with them over extended periods of time, right, from middle school till high school. And then, of course, you know, what we've talked about is reallocating our resources and our funding to hire highly-qualified special education teachers in areas that we can and reduce our number of educational assistants, and that's something that we've been kind of moving forward with. Some family engagement practices that I tried this year have led to some good, interesting discussions and conversations with our families, but I've had throughout this year coffee and conversation with Corey at 9:00 a.m. and at 6:00 p.m. I'm not sure who's drinking coffee at 6:00 p.m. I contemplated kind of cocktails with Corey at 6:00, but I'm not sure how that go over. Yeah. So, and that's been really, really an opportunity for me to engage one-on-one and even in small groups with families that I normally wouldn't communicate with on a regular basis. And so as you can imagine, the topics have been interesting. And we've had some really transparent, honest conversations and trying to build that trust, right? We want to build that bridge, we want to build that trust with our students and our families. And so that's been a way that we've been able to do that. Next one next week, if you guys want to come.
Only if it switches to cocktails.
We can manage that. So also what we put on are some family workshops, really geared at kind of where we were with the reopening and last year and the pandemic and still are, but we've been able to offer these two opportunities recently. Kim had, you know, participated and kind of organized an opportunity for families to meet with Department of Mental Health. And so we've been able to really look at, you know, what our families need, and this is what they're telling us, and we would love a workshop on this, or we'd love a workshop on this. And so we listen, and we try to organize as best we can, and these are things that take a lot of time. And I'm so fortunate with Foxborough Cable Access and what they've been able to do and support us as far as what those webinars look like, and really Mike Weber has been absolutely incredible in ensuring that he stays on the whole time and that, you know, if there's technical difficulties, he's there. So that piece is really a huge component to what we need to do to support families. So snapshot of our students, this is areas of disability that students can qualify under if they are found eligible for special education. That's the first question on the flow chart for special education. And so as you look down, you can see some numbers and some concerning things that I look at, right? Like specific learning disability, that's the outlier there. And so some of the work that we're doing within the district is to really look at our eligibility process and look at previous interventions and supports that have been used previously and ensuring that we're, you know, we're not providing over-identification for our students, right? That's not what we want to do. We want to ensure that when we do identify a student, that it's for that student and it's appropriately made, that decision made, okay? So a little zoom in by school. Full disclosure, the PowerPoint will not look like this next year. Thank you, Dr. Mall.
You're very welcome.
So when you look at kind of, you know, our preschool placements and then to our elementary placements, what you'll see is a common thread through this district is that the majority and the vast majority of our students are placed in full inclusion, right? And so you're going to see that. And so on the left here, you have kind of the different types of placement for our preschool students. And on the right, you have the Borough K to four, 39 students in full inclusion, one student partial inclusion. And then, as you know, we moved a specialized program over to the Borough this past year. So that's, you know, that program in particular, it's a substantially separate classroom. On the IGO, 51 students in full inclusion, two impartial, and five in substantially separate. What you may remember is that we have shifted our programming over there, and a piece of it was having a fully-inclusive specialized program. And so as you see there, the numbers, although we have two specialized programs within that school, are relatively really low because what we're able to do through the inclusion model, it's showing that when you want to build programs, you've got to build your inclusion model, right? And if you have both going at the same time, you're going to see some really good success. And over at the Ahern, we have 150 students in full inclusion, 15 impartial, and 13 substantially separate. The Ahern, you know, has gone through some changes as far as their programming, and within that programming, you know, we have our paid program and we have our team program, which is a therapeutic program. We have kind of made some shifts there, and then that you hear about in a little bit. And then we have our language-based program as well, that started when I came on board. We've built and consulted with Landmark into creating a language-based classroom and program. And so that program, as you know, through the budget process, also will be expanding next year to grade seven. And that's just going to be a thread that we're going to see and is going to continue to be needed through the high school. And then, of course, our high school, we have 88 students in full inclusion, 19 partial inclusion, 29 substantially separate. As you know, at the high school, we have our paid program in nine to 12, but also what we do have is our 18 to 22 program. And so that's kind of how that gets categorized, as well as, you know, we have a therapeutic program at the high school that's a fairly inclusive, pretty fully-inclusive program. And so it's really around the numbers that's really coming from the 18 to 22 program there, okay? Out of district, and as you may know from getting the student kind of monthly reports, what's really nice, and you'll hear again more later on, but the really incredible work that has been done to bring students that are out of district, back to district, as well as in-district, creating those programs to ensure that students that potentially would get placed out are able to be supported in health, that's their right, right? To be in their neighborhood school, to receive the services that they require. Of course, there are certain variables that would deter from that, but at the same time, really looking at how can we build capacity within our district to allocate our funds appropriately. So around the related services, we have in total 10, but, no, yep, eight, yeah, 9.5 rates in total as FTE, but 10 people, so we don't have a half a person. But so around speech and language, that's usually the highest area of need when it comes to related services. So as you see there, to this point where we are tonight or a couple days ago, there are 92 evaluations, okay? And then there's also two, over 240 students receiving direct speech and language services, right? And so that is just a smaller snapshot into what their world is because there's a number of other things that they're doing when it comes to, like I said earlier, consultative services, screenings, those types of things that kind of working on in the general education side of the house for a lot of those things. And so that's in addition to what they're doing as far as the special education service delivery side. Occupational therapy is our next kind of related service area of need, 68 evaluations up to this date, and 149 students receiving direct occupational therapy services. See, they're in the classroom or outside the classroom. And then our physical therapy is our least when it comes to need, when it comes to related services, but still obviously a need. We have 17 evaluations to date, and 40 students that receive direct physical therapy services.
Chair, I just had a quick question.
Sure.
Do you mind?
Yeah.
Just on that, because I think that a lot of times people, we just assume that people understand. Occupational therapy, what does that include? Because, you know, that's just a question, unless you have a kid that's receiving it and understanding it.
So there's so much there, it's like an onion almost with speech and language, right? So they don't just work on fine motor, which is really the target, kind of, if you will, kind of area that they're working on, but within our schools, they're working on sensory kind of diets, they're working on, you know, self-regulation types of strategies and supports within their classrooms. So direct service for any kid can look very different, but really the target in schools is to ensure that their fine motor skills provide them the ability to access the general curriculum. But they're doing far above and beyond what that is, like speech and language. It's not working on just articulation, right? They're working on a number of things, whether it be learning processes and processing language and those types of things. And so the level of service depends on what that student requires, but it varies with, when it comes to related services. And PT is really a gross motor and is really accessing the life of the school as far as the needs go.
Would tracking, like eye tracking, fall within occupational therapy, or does that fall within?
It's more of a vision, but that, you know, some OTs have their specialty in certain areas, right? You might have an OT that specializes in food and kind of eat, you know, that type, swallowing, that type of thing. But that necessarily depends on the skill set of that person, the training that they have. That's usually not an area that's really targeted.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
No problem. Okay. Okay, so around here, this is our academic and psychological slash cognitive testing that we do for our students that are part of the initial eligibility, re-eligibility for our students. And really, all students that are going through the eligibility process more or less receive academic achievement assessments and our cognitive or psychological assessments. The numbers are, you know, at the elementary levels kind of match the middle school. At the elementary level, our specialty teachers are doing the academic achievement testing. School psychologists are completing the cognitive and psychological testing. At the middle school, it's the same thing, but then at the high school, the school psychologist is overseeing all of academic testing, achievement testing, and psychological testing. And so if you look there, the number of academic and psychological evaluations are pretty much the same, right? Because they're receiving usually both assessments through this process. So at the IGO, 32 to date, and they have a .5 school psychologist, six special educators. That includes two specialized program teachers. And you have the Taylor School, who's got a point there, their school psychologist right now is split between, part-time, split between the Taylor and the Borough. So it is strictly testing there for her. And so, you know, also at the Taylor, with one, including one specialized program teacher, they have three total special educators. At the Borough, now including their additional specialized program, they have three total special educators. Again, they're sharing that school psychologist. At the middle school, we have one, 1.0 school psychologist, and I'll tell you, she's busy, you know? There's a lot of testing going on, especially at the secondary level. And so I appreciate the work that she does, but in addition, you know, what's there is that they have the teacher, but they're also completing the academic achievement assessments. And of course, at the high school, she's completing double that, right? So when you look at kind of evaluations, and I always, I meet with them monthly, the school psychologist, and kind of talking about evaluations and where they are and looking at things. What's interesting is that the amount of testing that does have to take place at the high school because we also have our students in our 18 to 22 program that parents, when they're looking upon, you know, aging out at 22, they're looking for updated testing and that type of stuff. And so that sometimes, you know, we're not just following the three-year mark on some of our kids. If parents need an assessment based upon some adult services, whatnot, we usually work out with the family and we're able to kind of push up the evaluation, you know, whether it be some updated comprehensive information for, you know, adult service providers and things. And then, oh, yeah.
Sorry. How long do those evaluations typically take? Because I know the evaluations can really range overall, but just to get an idea, when you're talking about 43 evaluations, in one sense, that doesn't sound like a big number, but how many hours is one evaluation?
Yeah, so that's going to be tough to answer, just because, yeah. I would say between writing, doing the testing, writing the report in a meeting, you're looking at five to seven hours in total. That's at the little side. You know, you're looking at the whole kit and caboodle, you're looking at even more than that. And I, tell me if I'm, it's probably on par.
I suppose higher.
By, no, for, as far as the timing for the actual assessment?
Because I think, because she does all of it herself.
So it's tough to answer, but, you know, with the meetings and then the writing of the report and the actual assessment itself, it does, you know, again, probably higher than the five to seven, but, yeah. And, you know, some testing is across multiple sessions of testing, right? So we're not just given the psychological in one sitting, right? This could be variable, and it could be a half hour today, an hour the next day. Some of our kids have those needs that we can't just, you know, have them sit six hours, correct? Yeah.
And if I could follow up from what Michelle's question was, just as more of a point of information for me and anybody else listening, is, that's a lot of, that's a lot of assessment. Is there a role for outside assessment, or do they have to be in-house assessments? I just, I guess I never really fully understood the relationship there.
Yep, so there's required assessments that we have to do. So there are at times where the clinical level need of a student, say, that's going through the process, we might refer out for testing. We've had to do that on a number of occasions this year. But if I were to send out a lot of our psychological testing to the outside, it's a high cost that comes with that. And so we're able to handle, you know, through some inventory building that we're doing in-house, and we're going to continue to do that as far as the instruments that we're using. And that's going to be something that we're going to continue to build, and that's increasing their own capacity. But there are absolutely times, Brent, that we do have to send out those assessments based upon what their needs are.
And then for an initial, does an initial have to be in-house?
Yes, it should, yes.
Thank you. Now, that's also just a point of information. I appreciate it, thanks for clarifying, that's helpful.
And then at the high school, as Pam mentioned, we have one school psychologist who's doing all of the testing with 10 special educators.
And testing is just one portion of the full evaluation, right?
Correct.
So it's a snapshot, depending whenever it has to be done. And then there's a whole bunch of application of that testing that has to come through, meetings with special educators and to put the full service package together for the full evaluation.
They're all nodding very heavily because this is what they live.
Yeah, that's what they do.
And then after the testing is done and the plan is written, then we can get services actually in place and educate, right? Okay, yeah, so this is all the initial things that we have to do.
Or continue the services.
Or to continue, thank you, Michelle.
Evaluations are done repeatedly.
Correct, every three years.
Right.
Yeah. Every three years.
And there might be times that we have to push it up based upon what, how the student's presenting, but, you know, we do the testing, there's a lot of data even behind that around what's happening, the support services that are happening through the eval process. That's also additional data collection, so it's not necessarily testing, you know, automatically IEP. It's testing, it's looking at other forms of data, and then using that to drive what that decision is made. And like I said at the beginning, in the end, it's all a team decision. It's all those service providers, including the parent or the family or the family member or guardian, whoever it may be.
Nice.
Okay. So our counseling caseload and support services, this is kind of a difficult way to kind of show this, but at the elementary level, we have one counselor per building. And then at the middle school currently right now, with some support of some grant funding, we have two full-time social workers. Of course, they have a guidance department, three guidance counselors. But then at the high school, we have, again, because of some grant funding, we have two social workers at the high school. The work they're doing right now and the level of time and commitment and caseload and workload for some of our students that are truly struggling is Herculean, and the work that they do. And I respect and appreciate all that they do on a consistent basis. But these are really just give some numbers, some concrete numbers as far as caseloads of students, right? So students that are receiving support through an IEP, or students that are receiving support through a 504 or a general education type of ongoing service. And so that gives our numbers here, but again, that's really around our social worker caseloads. There are also responsibilities upon our guidance departments at both levels that are providing that counseling and that therapeutic support for some of our kids that aren't necessarily reflected in this data. I really kind of went with IEP service or 504 slash general ed service. But again, there is so much more service happening via our guidance councils at both, you know, middle school level and at the high school level.
The percentages of students, it was a slide earlier in each building. Do you pay a lot of attention to that and compare it to the state average? It looked like it was 18, 16, 23, and then 17.
We do, that's something we consistently monitor and looking at that, you know, at the Ahern, we're about a little over 23%. Looking at, you know, our grade levels, it's pretty much around 40 as far as the numbers of students per grade level that are on IEPs. A piece of that is students that are coming in from the elementary level, right? And also a big piece of that is it's a five through eight, right? So it's an elementary kind of and middle school, so it's like that catch-all, if you will. And that's where you really see the gap, I didn't want to say gap, but really the visible kind of difference when it comes to students and their learning and if there potentially is a learning disability there. And so some of the work that we're doing with Allison and MTSS and what that looks like and developing some really consistent structures and supports to make sure, to your point, that we're not over-identifying students and that we're addressing it in the least restrictive environment with giving students what they require at that given time. But that is something that I noticed even coming to Foxborough, that we're just a little above the state average. Even coming here, we're a little over 20%, and then it varies by building. But I will say, you know, some buildings are starting to decline a little bit because of the work that they're doing through MTSS and kind of that support system.
And that's what prompted the urgency around. MTSS, to your point, Richard, was looking at the data.
I hope people keep hearing that acronym. I hope people keep hearing that acronym, because it's very valuable, it's very valuable work that's been done in this district to bring success and foundation to the students as well as progress and development of the percentages of our students on specialized. It's really important.
And it's part of our regular ed.
It's the day-to-day.
Focus, right? Just as our guidance counselors are part of our regular, a lot of, and you mentioned also speech, having some regular ed components, it's getting that intervention in place before it's a larger problem and having those conversations and bringing our collective expertise to the table to support students. So it is really important work. I think you'll continue to hear lots and lots about it.
And teachers too, because when teachers have the resources of MTSS, their satisfaction and what they're trying to do and implement every day is critical.
Of course.
It all kind of, it all kind of comes together. It's not easy to silo it, but it all kind of comes together.
Absolutely.
So a little snapshot into each level. Diana.
You're welcome. Hi. So I just wanted to talk about the highlights of this year. It's the first full year in the newly renovated, beautiful Borough Elementary School. The classrooms are beautiful, the group space, we have space for related services, for offices for people. We have a conference room. We're back to live drop-off with our own entrance with a roof, so we don't have to stand in the hurricanes and the rain. And I think the best part of this year overall is just losing the masks and getting us back to a little bit of normalcy in that area, especially when we're talking about speech and language for little kids that need to see the way your mouth moves in order to learn how to speak. So that's been really beneficial. The other thing is that we have an amazing preschool staff that exemplifies teamwork. They are collaborative, they are flexible, they are creative, they're dedicating to meeting the needs of all the students in our program. They include assistants, classroom teachers that are duly-rolled special educators, the speech pathologist, the occupational therapist, the physical therapist. We are also thankful for the custodians and the facilities people, because who would have thought that in 2022, with ADA in place in a brand-new building, that you would have sinks that the children can't reach? And the facilities people were absolutely amazing and the custodians, you know, moving sinks down. The concrete didn't sit right and the kids are tripping as they're walking into the building. We had ramps put in on the playground so that some of our wheelchair students could get into and access the playground. We had beautiful new swings and updated playground, and we had swings that we couldn't fit the kids in, so the custodians hung them and then took them down and then re-hung them again. So it's been absolutely, we're so grateful for all the support that we had on that end. So another highlight. I don't know if everybody knows about our preschool program. We actually have three classrooms, two of which are integrated and one is sub-separate. And the sub-separate, our learners with the highest level of needs. And it's not like a program that you may hear in other districts that it's the autism program or it's the developmental delay, it's the high level of need. So everything that happens in that classroom is tailored to each and every one of those children's individual needs. The programs are mainly half-day programs, even though we're seeing our level of need coming in, increasing in many of the kids. The programs are run mornings and afternoon, they're two-and-a-half-hour sessions, there's two-day sessions, morning and afternoon, three-day sessions, four-day sessions, five-day sessions, five-full-day sessions, eight sessions, seven sessions, just whatever you need, we figure it out.
There's a grid.
It's a lot of, you know, moving parts. So the other thing is many of our students come to us from early intervention. We have monthly screenings where parents or people in the community may have concerns about any particular developmental area of their children between ages three and five, and they can come, so we do a few of those every month. But the children that are transitioning from early intervention, it's our responsibility at age three or by their third birthday, that if they are eligible for special education services, that we provide them for them on their third birthday. So understand that that means on June 17th, if your birthday is June 17th and you're turning three, it's our responsibility to give you the services and provide what you need. And if your birthday is in August and September and July and whenever, so it's kind of crazy. It impacts our buses because we're adding kids all year long, not like when you come to school and your first grade class is your first grade class from September to June. So we start out low as we transition our kids, our older kids into kindergarten, and then we fill up pretty quickly. And as I mentioned earlier, we're seeing a significant increase of kids with higher levels of need than in the past. In order to meet these needs, we're being proactive and expanding specialized programming within our preschool, we're being very creative. We have to be quick planners for these high level of need students that are coming in. It's challenging because we don't know what the needs are until at max 90 days before their third birthday. That's without even laying eyes on them. Sometimes it's less than that, sometimes they've moved in, sometimes the parents and early intervention haven't gotten the process, the parents weren't sure what they were going to do, where they were going to go. So you may have a kid that shows up and, you know, a week from now is their third birthday with high level of needs. And one of the things that's happening is we've had several students in the past couple of months and continue to get two more coming and one really significant at the end of May that are high medical needs. And in order to keep these kids with us and make them part of our community and keep them as part of our community and integrate them and include them the way that we want to, we need to have that programming to support it. The preschool team has been working with inclusive practices along with the district initiatives to continue to provide equity, inclusion, accessibility for all. I talked about some of the access stuff with the playground and the different classrooms. Our our own professional development at the preschool level has been developing a document for MTSS at the preschool level, because the wording is a little bit different than, you know, they don't have a scribe in preschool, so we need to come up with the things that that make sense. So we're creating a classroom crown with skills that all students will have when they leave preschool, and that was inspired by district PD with Dr. Ken Williams. Preschool's also using the district-wide service delivery model, the three-to-one model. Services are provided on a monthly cycle, and it allows for the therapist to not only be in there on Mondays at nine o'clock all the time where they're seeing the same thing with the students, but that third week, fourth week, that fourth week of the cycle is a consultative-style service delivery. So it might be that they're doing direct service with the students in the classroom and teachers and assistants are being trained in the different techniques and strategies, whether it be speech, OT or PT. So we have the staff training for that. It also allows for observation of the students at different times of day so that we can troubleshoot if something isn't working, if something isn't quite right, we want to tweak it. Also, if things are going well, what's the next step? Where do we go from here? So that's been really supportive. And it helps with collaboration overall from the team so that everybody's on the same page, everybody's using the same language, everybody's doing the same supports, and you get that carryover, that generalization, because that's what we want. We want kids to learn the skill, use the skill, generalize the skill, and then do it over multiple settings and environments, not just in one space. Our sub-separate program has started participating in a weekly music therapy that comes in on Friday mornings. It's amazing to see our students with a high level of need kind of boogie in with the music and learning through a different modality. Music, everybody knows, people learn through music, and, you know, even our most challenged kids just find such success and take such pleasure, and you see them awaken in these, using that different modality. In terms of family support, preschool uses a, the classroom dojo application where, which we can take pictures and photos throughout the school day and share it with specific parents in the classroom. That has been really, really valuable and comforting to parents to be able to see their kids in action, learning. And, you know, they don't have any friends, they said they didn't do anything, blah, 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 well, here it is. And we are capturing those first words, we're capturing those social interactions, we're capturing all these different skill-building that they, the kids are learning, you know, right there in the moment for parents to see. The other thing that we've continued is our virtual meetings, and it's really helped to give parents flexibility to be able to attend and to communicate more readily and more easily with related service providers, providers, classroom teachers and the whole team, so that's been helpful. We've also consulted with Dr. Barry Plummer. As Corey mentioned, clinical psychologist that is one of our consultants works along with our BCBA. We also are very proud that one of our own preschool teachers has acquired her board-certified behavior analyst, she's a board-certified behavior analyst this year, so she completed that, so it's nice to have her with the skill. Oftentimes, these recommendations that are coming into preschool call for, you know, the clinical psychologist, the this, that and the other, and a BCBA. Well, we have that.
We have it.
In Moora, and we have it in our own classroom, so that's nice. Alan Bloom is another consultant we've been working with in terms of writing IEPs, and it's been helping with the vertical alignment of the language that we use and the service delivery models and the language that we use that helps with transition from preschool to kindergarten, from fourth to fifth and all the way up vertically. So got a lot going on, and it's nice to see that the preschool is part of everything that's going on in the district all the way to the top.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one quick question? Because you were saying you're seeing a lot more kids coming in. Is there an area that you're seeing more of where they're having deficits?
We're seeing, obviously, a lot more autism, but as we know, autism is a spectrum and, you know, we have a lot of MTSS that takes care of that. We are seeing a lot more medically impaired and challenged kids. And the other thing is the behavior and the social-emotional piece has gone, our COVID babies.
That's what I thought, yeah. Okay.
And, you know, some of that is, it'll just take them a little bit longer. And that's, that's one of the other things about preschool is that we only have so much space, we only have so much room to break kids, we don't have universal preschools. So I have many more kids and families coming to me saying, our family's falling apart, my kid's tantruming at home. And, and you guys probably are aware that the outside support services, the waiting lists are incredible. So it's wonderful for me to say, I have this nice list for you, and then they go back to the pediatrician, and then the pediatrician refers them back to us, and we just don't have the place to put them. And, you know, is it a disability? Well, we don't know that yet, you know?
For anybody in the room who knows, is what's, what kind of waitlist do we running for these preschool programs?
With preschool programs? Or do you mean the support services outside?
No, no, that, not that, but just, you know, I mean, I know we have run a high-quality preschool program, and I also know that that space is limited. I was just curious if anybody happened to happen to know, like?
In our preschool?
Yeah, in ours, yeah.
I do all that, so we're full for next year. We're full for next year already in terms of the lottery. We have a lottery system, so every classroom, the integrated classrooms are eight students pulled from a lottery that don't have any identified needs. Doesn't mean that something might turn up later, which sometimes occurs. The other piece to that is that where we only have the three classrooms and we only have so many sessions, we, we're only servicing 100 students total, that's including students with special needs on IEPs. So in the whole Foxborough town, we're only servicing 100, so 50 kids without disabilities.
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
And I think a piece of that too, Brent, is that we also have to reserve room for those students that we're not aware of that are coming in, so reserve some space for them as they need a program when they turn three. So, yeah, the moving, moving parts, I mean, we are in constant communication because we could get a student that moves in, or we could get, which happens all the time, a late EI referral packet that, you know, as you mentioned, is supposed to come 90 days in advance, sometimes we get them 40 days in advance, right? So it's like, all right, we've got to stop planning, like, what is this going to be? That's, that's a challenge.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Elementary.
So, thanks for having me tonight. I was hoping to start out really with an update on our specialized programming. I know this time last year, Corey presented and we all presented about how we, throughout the levels, we are really expanding our specialized programming, but at the elementary level, previously, we'd only had our two specialized programming, the PAVE program and the TEAM program. Over this last year, we have expanded those programs and really honed in on the specific needs of those kids within those programs. So we now have four programs within the district. We have the DLC, which is the Developmental Learning Center, which is now housed at the Borough, and that really is for our students that have significant communication and sensory needs. Many of those students use augmented communication devices, they have a really modified curriculum that they need to follow in order to, you know, access the curriculum. So that is at the, previously would be more aligned with what our PAVE program was, but at the elementary level, we're looking at it more developmentally. At the Taylor School, we continue to have our TEAM program there, and that is for our students that are, have more social, emotional and therapeutic needs. And they really are looking at having a highly structured program with positive reinforcements built in, a significant consultation with the school counselor there as well as the BCBA to support them in their behavioral needs as well as their social-emotional needs. And then at the IGO school, we have the Step In and the Step Out program. Now, while those are two separate programs, they do work closely together, and we've found throughout this year, I think more than we anticipated, that they're more flexible in nature between. We see that students sometimes require the support of, you know, step, so to explain, the Step In program, which is, you know, those students require multidisciplinary support throughout their day in order to access the curriculum, but also socially. In the Step In program, we look at those students primarily receiving those services within their general education classrooms and environments throughout their whole day. The Step Out program, those students require the same significant level of support throughout their day, but also have significant educational needs that they may need to receive support outside of the classroom for a portion of their day. There are significant academic challenges that may be, require some more modified curriculum. But we've seen throughout this year that as, you know, children are growing, as they're changing, they're really young, sometimes they require the support more in, sometimes more out, and it's more fluid. And the nice thing about having those two programs at the IGO school is that they're able to, the teachers and the staff that work in those programs are able to collaborate with each other, they're able, able to really be flexible in providing that support, which has been wonderful, and I think it's encouraging and exciting to see that continue throughout the next couple of years. One of the nice things too, I think, about how we've expanded and really defined these programs a little bit better is that we're able to target the collaboration, we're able to target the professional development of the staffs, we're able to target who we bring in for consultation, really tailored to the unique needs of those children in those different programs. So I think that's been very beneficial, and I think that we're seeing a lot of growth within those programs as a whole. The next thing I want to talk about, and Corey already spoke about this a little bit, is inclusive practice and how we've been growing and, you know, really improving our practice within this area. We want all children, of course, to receive their, the support that they need in the least restrictive environment possible, but we want that support to be meaningful for them. We don't want it to be inclusion just for inclusion sake, to be able to say, we include all of our students, we want it to be meaningful. And I have to say, I'm extremely proud of the work that we've done at the elementary level throughout this year with that. And again, as Corey had mentioned, IGO has really led the charge of that this year, being the largest of the elementary schools with, you know, the highest number of special education staff there, but it's really been a collaboration between special education staff and related service providers and the general education teachers. The work with Lisa Decker has really helped guide that practice for them. It's also been really wonderful to see as we're shifting ourselves away from looking at our special education services as support that goes in and then pushes out and is really isolated for those particular students that have IEP needs, and we're shifting it towards really building those co-teaching partnerships between our special educators and our general educators, how not only are the students with IEPs benefiting from that because they're receiving their support really integrated throughout their whole day, also the children that are not on IEPs, that don't receive those support. They may all, they're also benefiting from having a special educator or related service provider that's spending more time in that room and is becoming a part of their community. So those teachers are able to pull kids that may have some, you know, like needs into groups while they're in that classroom. It also allows the general education teachers the time to work with the students with special needs in a more targeted way as well in those small groups. And I think we've seen incredible things with that this year. And I think we've seen incredible things with that this year. And I think that everyone has, the special educators, the general educators, the parents have really been very encouraged and very excited by this. And I can't wait to see how, you know, it continues on. Um, again, that work with Lisa Decker has really helped with that. And I think that it's encouraging to see that the teachers have volunteered to do these, these programs with her and are really excited and invested themselves. Now, as I said, IGO really led the charge, but the nice thing now about that is we've had some meetings with teachers from Taylor, teachers from borough, so that we can start to expand that to the other elementary schools as well. So it's really exciting to see that go forward. Now, the next thing I wanted to talk about was IEP development. Diana mentioned our work with Alan Bloom. And this really ties in as well as our work with inclusive practices. Because our IEP is what, it really is the plan for the students. It indicates all of their needs, all of the services that they're going to require. And our work with Alan has helped us really um, provide, you know, clear and targeted plans for our students. This year, our focus, especially in the elementary level, has really been on the way we write our goals. Making sure that they're clear, they're concise, they're targeted at the individual's needs, that they're going to make sense as the student moves forward into the different levels, as they transition from elementary school into the middle school, that those service providers working with them will understand exactly what those goals mean and how to work with the students. The other piece of that is really looking at what is the skill deficit that the child has? We may have a child that's struggling in math and really pulling apart whether it's a specific learning disability in math and therefore we need to target a goal at that specific content area. Or does the child have a skill deficit in executive functioning, which is impacting their math abilities? So again, looking at creating goals and tracking that progress at the skill deficit. And if we're looking at, for instance, if it's more of a executive functioning need, by targeting that goal, we're also improving that, that area in all across the curriculum. So um, really defining that has helped quite a bit. And I think it will continue as they move on in the different grade levels. Um, as far as family support was the other area I wanted to talk about, and we had mentioned already bringing in um, Dr. Plummer for some port. I don't think, I mean, it doesn't even need to be said that the last few years have been incredibly difficult for families. As we talked about already, finding outside resources has been incredibly challenging. Um, as Diana mentioned, we make these recommendations, but often there isn't anywhere for them to go. The waitlist for those type of situations can be anywhere from six months to two years, I've heard parents come back and tell me, which is just incredibly frustrating for them. So we've been working with our, our guidance counselors, our counselors to help families find supports for them outside of school, but also provide those supports within the district through, whether it be through general education support or whether it be through services through an IEP. Um, and again, bringing in those consultants such as Dr. Plummer, who has helped us navigate that with families and seek out those other alternatives that they can um, find for themselves. And finally, I wanted to talk about transitions between levels because we know that we can get to a point where we feel we, we have a student in a really good place. And it's really frightening and scary for families to know that as a child transitions to the next level, will they still receive that same support? Will it look the same? Will they still be as successful as they have been? You know, they were so happy at the Taylor School. What's gonna happen when they move to the Ahern? And that provides, you know, provokes a lot of stress for families, students. Everybody gets a little anxious about it. I'm a parent. I understand that completely. So one of the things that we've been doing to make sure that that transition is a little bit smoother is we've begun working really at the beginning of this year, thinking about our students, whether they be moving up from the preschool, whether they be transitioning onto the middle school, and um, starting right away to think about what the needs of some of those students are, especially those with higher levels of needs, and beginning those observations of the students earlier in the year, throughout the year, having some consultation with a different staff. You know, Diana and I have spoken quite a bit about a lot of different students, as well as Sherri and I have, knowing that um, the more information we have going forward and will give us more um, confidence in making the right placement for them as they move into the next level. Um, and again, those meetings have gone on throughout the year. We will be having this year a, just something to look forward to for our students that are being, moving on to the middle school. In the past, we've had um, smaller transition meetings that have been um, very similar in nature. We will be having a transition night for students moving from fourth grade to fifth grade. It will be a Zoom meeting that we'll be setting implementation and letting families know about soon, um, that will be at night. And we'll answer all those questions. Lots of members of the middle school staff will be there to answer those questions about how services will be provided at the middle school and what that may look like. And we'll also be having some smaller transition meeting for students that have higher levels of needs and will have more individual needs going forward. But, all right. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Middle school.
Thank you.
That was a big transition.
Sherri, that was the easiest presentation.
I know. I wasn't really. Okay, next time. So again, Sherri Spicer, first of all, I'd like to start off by thanking um, Corey and Karen, everyone at this table. This is my first year here with Foxborough and I've felt very supported um, during this time and um, just learning about the different levels of needs in this district and doing my best to try to support the families and um, and our staff in that process. Um, Rose mentioned Alan Bloom, which interestingly, he was my academic advisor when I was at Simmons College. So like, you know, it's funny going back and, you know, he's now in my district. And that was maybe almost twenty years ago. I don't wanna really age myself too much, but it's, it's been amazing working with him again. Um, he's done a tremendous job with providing um, professional development, not just to the special educators, but to everyone here at this table. Um, so I'm looking forward to the continued work with Alan as we move forward. Um, we've done a lot of work this year with our TEAM program, with um, essentially redesigning the program and shifting, um, or splitting the program internal needs versus external needs. We've seen a high number of students this year um, coming with um, a high severity of social, emotional level um, needs that need to be addressed in a more therapeutic setting. So this has been, um, I think a successful split thus far. And we continue to watch the program grow. Um, we've worked with Dr. Plummer has been integral in helping with that, with that divide, with helping us plan like entrance and exit criteria. And um, just um, giving us advice on how to, how to move forward. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, we have our LINK program, which is our language-based program. Um, I know that recently started. Um, next year, um, we're looking forward to that, including seventh and eighth grade. So um, the services just won't stop for the sixth graders as they go on to the seventh grade. We're able to continue that, that um, service. And uh, we have partnered with Landmark, who, um, who provides consultation services with Erica McNamara, who's been wonderful in, in helping lead and develop that program.
Top right corner. That's her.
Yes. Um, so it, it's been a wonderful process. Um, I'm learning a lot this year about that program and, and um, just excited to watch it grow and expand and continue to do our work. Again, um, you know, Landmark is helping us with the entrance and exit criteria. Um, we wanna, you know, make sure that strategies have been utilized in um, general ed programs before students come into that, into that setting. Um, you know, trying to keep them in the least restrictive environment possible. Um, so that's, that's an ongoing process and it continues to develop. We also have our PAVE program, which I've been spending a lot of time in and is amazing watching um, these students develop into their own, um, you know, individual personalities and watching them be able to transition back out into the general ed setting, even if it's just for one or two classes or not more classes. There are some students like I never see in there. I see them in the seventh grade and I see them in the eighth grade. And I'm like, I didn't even know they was a PAVE student because they're never in there when I do visit the program. So it's, it's been very amazing. Uh, we do have the music therapy program, which was mentioned earlier. And it's just funny because when I was first told about it, that um, the student that that program was brought in for is the one who likes it the least, but everybody else loves it. So like, they all benefit from it and it's very popular. And um, you know, I look forward to seeing that also continue for the next um, school year. And um, speaking of transition nights, Rose and I and Pamela and I have been um, planning um, those transition nights and transition meetings. We just recently had the, the one for the eighth graders. And um, I've got a lot of positive feedback from that. Um, as well as we've already started um, transition meetings for those students that are going up to the high school. And you know, with one most recently being one of our PAVE students whose parents were worried about that, that transition. I think with that meeting, we had a high school representative come to his um, TEAM reconvene meeting and they put a lot of the fears at rest. So, you know, I see the positivity of, of, and the benefits of these meetings and continue to um, watch it grow. We're looking forward to the transition for our fifth graders coming up in May. And um, the um, transition, we're already, Rose and I are already planning for um, the transition, individual transition meetings um, with our liaisons. And um, that's also coming up. Uh, with the transition night, we'll have those special ed liaisons, sorry. And the guidance counselors uh, have all committed to attending. So I think that it's gonna be a very informative night and, and help with ease those fears of our incoming fourth graders.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll try to go fast because I know we're, we're definitely over time. I realize that. So, and I wish I had gone first because they took a lot of my stuff.
Origin connected.
So just a couple of things. You know, we too, obviously have the specialized programs at the high school as well. We have our TEAM program, we have our PAVE one program, and we have our PAVE two. Currently in our TEAM program, we have twenty-two students. We are pretty much a fully inclusive therapeutic um, classroom, which we're really proud of. And as, we have a lot of schools now reaching out to us saying, hey, we heard you have an inclusive therapeutic program. How do you make that work? So we're really proud of that. Um, I've been in this role for six years and, and we've really worked to really, really develop our specialized programs to provide the kids as many inclusive opportunities as possible. Um, we have, as I said, we have twenty-two students in our therapeutic classroom. We have a lot of students that come in for lunch because at the high school, as everybody, the social, emotional needs because of COVID has really escalated. And as you could see from the numbers that Corey showed, even with the counseling, you know, we have thirty kids on an IEP receiving counseling. We have over thirty students that are either 504 or Gen Ed that are also receiving counseling on a regular basis. And that doesn't count popping in on, on, you know, unscheduled times or seeing the guidance counselor or, you know, it's just really, um, it's really, really can be very frightening at the high school with the number of kids that are impacted. And it is the age where so many um, you know, mental illness crops up, you know, at that age as well. And like everybody else, there are no, there are no therapists available. So the kids are really, really struggling. And, and we really feel the impact of that across Gen Ed, across Special Ed. I think a lot of teachers, you know, we had met with Larry Epstein and he really kind of described it as compassion fatigue. And that's how the teachers are feeling because, you know, just working so hard to try to support all the kids through all of this is really a daunting task right now at the high school level because we still have credits and grades and all of those fun things that go along with being a high school student. Um, so within our program, we also have a lot of kids that pop in for lunch because they don't want to be in the cafeteria. So it really is kind of a safe environment there. And, and, you know, they're very welcomed by our staff there. So we do that as well. Our PAVE one program is our, kind of our nine through twelve. And um, we have a, a mix of kids. We have some that are fully self-contained, although they do go out to their electives. They go to cooking, they go to sculpture, they go to pottery. Um, we have kids that in, within the PAVE program that are actually earning high school diplomas because they're going to specialized classes through, taught by special ed teachers, but then receiving support back in the classroom, that reteaching that has really afforded them the opportunity to take in past the MCAS exams, which is really rather exciting. Um, and then our PAVE two program is our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old program. And it's been a little bit challenging because we didn't really have a lot of job sites. However, now with some of the restrictions being lifted, we've been at CVS all along. They love the kids. Like if our kids aren't gonna be there and we call and say, we can't come today, what do you mean? We have a truck, you know, so, or, or they'll call and say, bring as many kids as you possibly can because we have a big load. So, you know, that's really exciting as well. We just got back um, Sturdy Hospital, Mansfield Shredding, and Bodle Redemption. So the kids are excited that they're able to go out. We also this year have been able to have our speech pathologist, Kayla Syracuse, is now going to job sites too, to kind of see are the kids generalizing the skills that she works on in her sessions in the job sites. Um, we're gonna add in maybe like, as they do go to restaurants to kind of practice all of their social skills. So she's gonna join them for a meal and kind of, you know, be able to do that and see how the kids are generalizing.
That's been Pam's baby too. That's been something that you've really pushed.
Yes. Yes. Yes, I have. Thank you, Corey. That's been really, really important to me. Um, we're excited. It's not so much Special Ed, but you know, in a way it is. Unified Track is back up and running. So yay. We have ten-plus kids involved. We also have our Warrior Teammate program, which combines Jet End students and Special Ed students. It's great for the upperclassmen because then they're able to also get their gym credit and work with some of our Special Ed kids too. So it's really a wonderful, wonderful program. And that was kind of put on the back burner through COVID. So we're really excited that that's back happening to actually this semester. Um, as everybody mentioned, we did do our parent transition night. I've been doing this for years in person originally. And now we've been doing virtual the last couple. And we had over twenty parents attend, which is really kind of a, a lot for a transition night. So that's been great. And we've gotten good feedback on that. I'm trying to go as fast as I can. Um, you know, so just one area, just kind of just to sum up. I mean, the high school Special Ed staff is just amazing. And I think we have a really, really well-running department, which I'm really, really proud of. Um, and, and some of the things that we also put into place, knowing that, that last year, and I think from, I might have talked about this last year, but, you know, prior to school starting, when we were hybrid learning, we were really concerned about the kids that weren't on IEPs. Because we knew the kids on the IEPs were going to get the support they needed. And we did, you know, we brought them in extra. We had the bus transportation, but we were really worried because we worry about all kids. It doesn't matter if they're on an IEP or not. We worry about all kids. And we were able to um, kind of build an enhanced tutoring program upstairs in the media center at the high school for kids on 504s, you know, during COVID. And then we just saw there was such a need that it's really enhanced now. We actually, it's almost frightening because there are so many kids that are requiring this additional support right now. But there are seventy-five kids that go through the tutoring on a, on a weekly basis, which is a lot of students, actually daily basis because it's per period, almost seventy-five a day going through the tutoring um, for additional support. And most of the students are either struggling with social, emotional needs and/or executive functioning or both. We do have the kids that do need the actual tutoring for the academics, but now that's being outweighed by the students that just are really, really struggling being in school full-time. Um, so I'm really happy that we have that because that would be a lot of students that were really floundering. Um, so that's really a, a great program, um, you know, that we have running at the high school as well. And I think, I tried to go so fast that I didn't even follow my notes, but, so I'm really excited um, with everything that we've done at the high school. And it's been, it's been a challenging year, but pretty beneficial.
And I will miss Pam. She's retiring at the end of this year.
Yes. I am retiring at the end of this. Thank you, Corey.
Can we take that back?
She's happy. I'm not, but, um, big shoes to fill for that.
Thank you.
Last, certainly not least.
All right. So I'm gonna have to talk really quickly or not talk about many of my things. But I just want to thank you for having me here to share sort of some of the work that I do within my role, the two major components, the added district that I sort of oversee, and then the student support, student service piece, which are somewhat different, but somewhat connected. So um, I think at the beginning, Brent, when you mentioned the least restrictive environment, obviously for added district students, they're our most vulnerable students. I take this um, role very seriously in making sure that they receive what they need, sitting at the table, advocating for them, the services that they need to make effective progress and transition to the least restrictive environment, of which many students have returned, gone out and have returned back, gone from residential to therapeutic day to collaborative and have come back to in district. So I think that um, I really enjoy that piece of, of my role. That is really to recognize them as, you know, Foxborough students, that they are um, receiving the same quality education that all the other students um, receive. Takes um, a lot of, similar to in-district students, collaboration with families, a lot of collaboration and work with programs to sort of make sure that they're sort of following what the, the student's IEP and collecting the data and reporting on their progress. Um, it also entails work with state agencies, Department of Mental Health, the Department of Developmental Disabilities, Department of Children and Families, to really Department of Children and Families, to really kind of work with this population of students. So going back to sort of where Corey started this and and some of what Rose had sort of added in terms of our in district programming, we're constantly trying to strengthen those programs so that these students who can, who are out of district and when they're ready can return in district. And that's sort of a very collaborative progress, progress with a lot of members of our in district teams, of which is really very satisfying and have happens most years, at least a few students. So that's sort of the out of district piece. Under the student supports and student services, I think that people have highlighted bits and pieces of this. But it really, it looks to, again, not to be redundant, but really the the social emotional needs that we have within our district prior to the pandemic and then since the pandemic, the high level of students that have a very high level of need. And then those students who really may not have had any social emotion who were have anxiety or who are struggling. So there's a very wide range of that. It speaks to what Allison was speaking to with the MTSS, the significance and the importance of the of social emotional component of MTSS. And I think that this student support is sort of highlighting a lot of those elements and they kind of all intertwine. And so our mental health teams, we have mental health teams at the elementary, the middle and the high school level. Elementary meets twice a month, middle and high school meets every week. And that is a group of mental health providers at each level, which includes school psychologists, our guidance counselors, our social workers. We have nurses involved to some degree and our our building admin are very actively involved and very supportive of that. So we're looking at individual students. We're looking at trying to create, proactively create action plans to support families and to support kids so that they are able to better manage in school, looking at all students, not just special education students. So this could entail a regular ed student, it could entail a student on a 504 or a student on an IEP. And so those teams are sort of the vehicle to kind of navigate action plans for students and also to look at themes that we're seeing throughout the levels of students of that, you know, whether it be, you know, alcohol use or, you know, different things that we're sort of troubleshooting those things at each level. And how can we address that? How can we support students individually, in dyads, in groups, or even as a whole class or as a whole building? The second sort of bullet to that, which goes with that, is our social emotional learning and mental health academy, of which Corey and Allison sort of got Foxborough in on that. It's a program that's supported by DESI that we, it's a three year program. So we're in our first year of that. And we have a multidisciplinary team that runs across the gamut of our entire district. So all of our five schools are represented and we have representation from regular ed teachers to special ed teachers to counselors, to our BCBA. So I sort of am leading that team and that team has really done some amazing work this year, looking at the MTSS, doing a analysis of what we have in each school and also district wide at tier one, tier two and tier three and sort of what our needs are, where the gaps are and what questions do we have around that. So now we're at the end of the year and we are looking to finalize action plans based on that. And we're prioritizing action plans for each of our five buildings and then one action plan for our district wide, which sort of encompasses obviously all five schools, but some of them are individualized to the, you know, perhaps something maybe very individualized to the borough or the Ahearn. And so we're sort of looking to have those priorities so that we can present those to our admin coming up in May and then really having the, a plan to look at what our second year of that academy may look like. And we have a a sort of technical assistance, I call a guide, supporting this process as I lead this team. His name is Jim and he's really been supportive and helpful sort of in this process. And that team has actually done really good work and I'm very happy about that. Pam had mentioned Larry Epstein. Larry and I have worked very closely in the past two years, looking at sort of the impact of the pandemic on our students and and also on our staff and how do we support them through staff wellness and staff wellbeing. And that's been done in many forums. Last year we had Zooms where we had, we met with administrators at each level to kind of talk it through. We met with our mental health teams at each level multiple times. We met as a whole entire district for our mental health team with Larry. And we've also met with our team chairs and our school psychs to kind of sort of process that and look at how we are supporting our teachers, to which Pam referenced with the compassion fatigue. There's also surge capacity in terms of sort of the high level of stress and sort of stress, stress that staff are facing day to day in an increased level and sort of the trauma that's everyone's having. It's maybe minor for some and major for others, but it definitely is a, an element of this pandemic. So Larry's really been helping with that. Most recently, he will be supporting our staff at all levels. He will be at the Ahearn. Karen had requested that he go to the Ahearn to a staff meeting based on surveys and where staff are and what they may need. So he's going to come back and revisit the staff there. As a result of that, we we broadened it to high school. So he'll go to the May faculty meeting at the high school. And then soon to be determined, he will support an evening or an afternoon with all three of our elementary staff to come together to sort of have him sort of share his magic, of which he's very, very good at. And he does a very nice job and has supported this district very well in this pandemic. We have for years wanted to have a universal screening tool for social emotional, social emotional. And Corey was very instrumental in that and did a lot of legwork, not only in securing it, but also to really have it and and get it up and running within our district as it related to technology. As you can imagine, a lot of glitches to that. We started, we're piloting it. So we're really trying to help our staff get, become familiar with the actual platform. So we've done a student survey one round. We are in this process of doing a second round soon at all levels. And next year, the goal will be to do survey, student surveys three times a year and really taking that data and and looking at it very carefully through the academy and also through our mental health teams. So we're sort of figuring that out in terms of how we best look at that data and how we use it to strengthen sort of the work that we do. Not only is it a screening tool in terms of sort of targeting kids and what their needs may be, it is also has a platform of many, many interventions and strategies that regular teachers can use. So when they become more familiar, they can go in and access it. If there's a particular concern or issue in their classroom, they can, you know, do an activity or one of the interventions that's there. The the platform and the actual screening tool is is very, very broad and it's it's extremely useful. It does many, many things. So I think as we become more and more familiar and we're utilizing it more and more, we'll be able to be proactively help all kids. And this is again for all students. It's, it's, you know, the surveys were for all students all the way from elementary through high school. Cluster the last, the next three together, Corey had mentioned sort of McLean. We've we've consult, McLean has been a consultant to the district for several years. They are a medical team that we sort of have through McLean Hospital. So a psychiatrist, a psychologist, we've had many PhD sort of clinical interns to really work with us around case consultation. And most recently, in the past few years, they have helped us to develop the curriculum for our bridge programs for our middle and high school, of which we had the luxury through our our lead nurse for our district gen to get some funding and also some funding that Allison and Corey have sort of secured to have a program that will be staffed with an educational person and also a social worker, one at the middle, a program at the middle school and a program at the high school. I caution with using the word program. It is a program, it's not really a placement. It is a intervention for students who have had and have been out of school for extended periods of time due to a medical concern and or social emotional, mental health issue. And so it helps reintegrate them back into school. We also have developed a curriculum for groups and that will be hopefully utilized. Actually, at the middle school, I think it's actually going to be used soon in the next week to start the group curriculum with the bridge program there. The high school is is coming on board as well. And what we had done through McLean, we spent the year training all of our mental health staff district by on this curriculum so that we can use it for bridge, but we can also use it for groups at all levels, which again speaks to the tier two level of intervention, meeting the needs of more students based on the mental health teams and or the buildings in terms of what what kind of, what issues are students really struggling with? And should and can we do a group to have a a way to service, you know, a larger number of students? So we do have a nine module curriculum based on that, that student, that staff are trained on. And we'll be hoping to continue to roll out that more again, proactively to service students, all students in the area of social emotional. And lastly, I don't know that I need to mention Dr. Barry Plummer, but he's a wonderful consultant to our district, of which staff and I think most important, because I think in my mind, the work that I do, the the most important thing is to collaborate and engage families because parents know their students better than anyone and they will always know their students better than any of us ever will. And so engaging families in the process and supporting families as they work through whatever it is that they may be working through. For Dr. Plummer, he is really pretty phenomenal in terms of engaging families and also engaging school teams to really assist and consult with those cases because we are seeing a spike, a pretty significant increase of students with a very high level of need. So we're sort of trying to work with that through our consultation piece. And we're trying to proactively address all students as the anxiety has sort of trickled and for some students just really skyrocketed. We're seeing across the nation, the surgeon general says there's a 50% increase of students across the country who have anxiety and depression. So we're doing our very best to try to really look at that thoughtfully and carefully, address it and strengthen the programs that we have to support that. So that's what I have.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I I will say these five people are the five reasons why I'm the luckiest director in the state, right? Clearly, the dedication, the work, the commitment to students and families has been incredible since I've been here working with them and our community to, our vision is not only supporting students in special education, but our vision is supporting students and their families, right? And so that's, that's our model, that's, that's what we're going to continue to do. And and I always look for input from from anyone. That is, that is our presentation.
I just wanted to say thank you so much for such a comprehensive overview. It's really a pleasure to listen to all of you talk about with such passion what you do. And that's really important. I just wanted to share, my kids came into the school district both on IEPs in elementary and middle school. They're now in high school, A students with no, not receiving any services while they're in high school. So that's a success story and it really says a lot about the program that we we have here and how lucky we are to have all of you. So thank you.
Thank you. Sarah, Brent, go ahead.
Thank you.
That's neat. That, we asked for this, actually. In our strategic plan, I mean, we, we, we asked to, to, to learn more about what you all do. Because you see it in the district strategic goals and it's a lot of information, but it's all to get, individually, it's all amazing. Together, it's incredible, it's impressive what you all are building and and pushing forward. And that's all on top of what you already had to do, already just by fulfilling the mandates of the job, of which there are many. I guess you talked a lot about changes in the programs that are coming up and looking ahead.
I'm sorry.
What?
I just want to show you guys.
I do this, I do this.
He writes in orange, there's orange all over all of this stuff. So congratulations on that. I'm sorry, I had to embarrass you.
Welcome, well, my black pen, but now I'll be able to read it. This is how I, this is how I remember this stuff. So I appreciate it, but um, and and I guess I'll go, just first a general question because I just like hearing your take because you all are so immersed in the work that you're doing. So the general question is, and I guess I'll start with Ms. McDowell and I can go to Ms. Anderson and I'm back on down in reverse order, is let's say all the initiatives you're currently working, working on work. Let's say you, 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 you get the, you, you get the extra support and things that you're asking for. The budget's locked now, so we already voted on that. So you can't, you can't do anything beyond that. But, but if you, if you're to look forward three, four years and if, if you're, if your, if your plans have all worked, right? What looks different, what's changed and what feels the same in your various roles, I guess, for you? And you don't have to answer, it's just if you had anything in mind, I just like hearing how you all think.
She'll be on a beach somewhere.
Start with Pam.
No, no. Pam, this is assuming, this is assuming we get our wish and hijack her retirement.
I want an early childhood center.
That, that's, there you go. See, that's what, that's what I'm asking about, right? Because listen, I mean, when, when, when Mr. Cantfield and I were on the, on the committee, we were looking for the spec director and we, we talked a lot, the whole committee talked a lot about the high powered folks that we have working in the district and that this is a place of ambition and vision and 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 a high level of work. And that's, that's why we ask. So yeah, that's, it's, it doesn't mean, you know, I mean, it's just, it's, I'm just curious. So anything that comes to mind, so.
So something I've always, it's always been a dream of mine and, you know, I just didn't think it would ever happen in a public school setting, to be honest with you, is thinking about the kids 18 to 22 and even the kids, the kind of like feeder, PAVE one kids would to be have some type of a cafe where the kids could work there, they could make food, they could do coffee. People from the community could come in, they could, you know, they'd, they'd learn all the social skills. They'd learn, like, I, I obviously was inspired by one down the Cape that I had gone to. But that's always something and it's always, I, it's something I actually talk to my husband about of in retirement. Of this is really something that would be my dream to do and to partner with Foxborough for, because I worked here for so long. But it's just something that if I, if money was not an object, I say, could we have a little building so that we can bring the kids and they can run this little cafe and people in the community can come in and have coffee and muffins and and the kids learn how to be a hostess, how to do dishes, how to do money, how to, you know, say, can I get you anything else? Just all the social skills that go. So that would maybe be my dream, Brent, if, if.
I was asking.
If the stars aligned.
If the stars aligned, that's fine, I'm just curious. Anybody else?
I don't know if mine's as ambitious as a cafe, but with the growth we've seen in our inclusive practice, if I could have a special education co-teaching team at every grade level at every elementary school to the point that the kids and the parents and anyone walking in doesn't know who the special educator is and who the general educator is because there's so much part of the community that it's just they work so seamlessly together that the kids don't know and neither do the parents.
I, I hope in three to five years, our, our district numbers are so low that I don't need Kim anymore, right? I mean, no, in reality, I mean, the work that she's been able to do in bringing students back to district and utilizing those resources and the allocation of the resources, right? Because sometimes we can reallocate those funds for in district supports and services. So Kim and making sure through COVID that they were receiving, our push was, and she had mentioned is, is ensuring that those students are still Foxborough students and those students are still receiving as high quality service and instruction as our students were in district, right? And so I think the work that we've been able to do there and Kim's work, being able to bring students back and building programs and partnership as a cohesive unit here, we have very, very rich discourse as a group. And and I think as a group, we're comfortable in engaging in those conversations. I think that's just part of the district and people feel safe to talk and and have those honest conversations. I think we're able to do that. And I think to Brent's point, I think that when we get to a point where our district is a K to 12 district that have, that has inclusive practices embedded and threaded throughout the district.
Thank you. Any other?
He answered all the other ones.
Okay.
I would give one of, one of my pipe dreams, but I'm, I would have to think too much, it's too late and we're over time. I gotta process it a little bit. I have something that I might say, but maybe the next time.
You, you have our contact information.
You can get a rain check, absolutely.
I, I'll keep my orange pen.
I'll take the rain check.
Any questions? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, you know, I think I've been here for a long time. And and one of the things that sort of this meeting started with welcoming a new principal to the high school, that I am very grateful to work in this district, to have the support that we do have from our admin, our building based admins, to have from Amy and Allison to Corey and and for you as a school committee. I think it's, you know, really a very important piece to this and I'm grateful to be a part of that. And I want to say thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, you know, I just like to give a hard time. I deserve it.
He took my question, so I'm good.
No, I saw, I saw him written, I saw him written down there and I just.
He's writing in orange. He's real electronic.
Mine's on the computer, buy in this guy, let's get dreamed.
Yeah, no, I just, I, I want to echo what Michelle said and Brent said and, you know, really appreciate how comprehensive this, this was this evening. It was a pleasure to go over the allotted time because you gave us so much to think about, so much to be proud of with what you are accomplishing in our district. I think it's really important that we identified a point along the way that it's not just a certain part of our population. It's our entire student population that are being impacted by the services and the support that we provide and that we are working harder and harder to make sure that more students throughout the population are being able to take advantage of the work that professionals such as you guys do. So thank you very, very much for your time in preparing, in preparing for this evening. Thank you for your time and your patience with indulging our questions and for our curiosity. It really is a great, like I said, it's a great source of pride for all of us. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one. Yeah, I just wanted to say, one, piggyback on that, thank you so much for not, for not just doing the base minimum, and that, I, you know, I think parents see that, and we see that up here, and we appreciate that. And you can't say that enough, because we don't all, through the past two years, we haven't all heard that enough, because it, it has been tough. And, you know, one of you mentioned something about compassion fatigue, and I can definitely see how that is, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Last thing on the agenda is the acceptance of a donation from Schneider Electric.
So there's not a monetary value on this, but what they, we're doing is closing down one of their plants off Mechanic Street, and they had some furniture that they've been distributing and offered. So we did take for the Ahern a conference setup, which was table, chairs, and credenza. So just want to kind of formally accept those as items for the school committee.
Thank you. I have a motion to accept the donation of items from Schneider Electric.
I move to accept the donation of furniture for Schneider Electric with much gratitude.
Second. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Onto other matters. Sarah?
You know, you know, I always love the other matters.
Yep.
First and foremost, just want to say, very proud of all the student volunteers that came out to make the Taz and Tiara's Dance such a success. It was, I was, I did get to finally be a fly on the wall. They boxed me out for many years, when, so if my daughter was attending, they wouldn't let me come volunteer. So it was great to be a fly on the wall, but the greatest part was to watch our student, our students interact with the fathers and the daughters and really enhance the experience. Made me really proud of all of our, our students and just how they, they just jumped right in, however they could help. It was awesome. And thank you again to Renee and the Rec Department for all the work. It really was a fun event. Again, nice to see people and smiling faces and everyone back together. Secondly, the farmer's market starts June 2nd, and it runs until September. It's on Thursday nights from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it leads right into the concerts on the commons, so another really fun thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Michelle?
Nothing for me.
Richard?
Nothing.
All right.
Uh, no.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Yukna?
Yes, I'm good.
Dr. Mello?
Just want to say, we had a great turnout at Program of Studies the other night for the Ahern Middle School, and it was an awesome presentation, and it was just nice to see kids and families that we've known for a long time, you know, just coming through and, and seeing that the, they could see the changes in the programming at the Ahern Middle School with Project Lead the Way and some other really great things, Responsive Classroom coming, so it was a great night. Dr. Bertos was there, too. It was great.
I'm gonna get, I'm gonna bring you a box of tissues now for, for the next couple of weeks, too, so.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah. So Jacob or Grace, any updates for us?
I don't think so.
Yeah, not really.
Thank you guys for, thank you guys for staying around tonight, as well, Dr. Bertos.
I just would mention that today we launched the Parent Guardian K-12 Culture and Climate Survey.
That's right, you did.
And we will, this is the 10th administration of that survey. We've added to it this year, looking at social emotional goals that we had, as well as diversity, equity, inclusion, and looking about access for students. So there's some additional questions on the survey for parents, and the students in grades five to 12 also take this survey that will start happening in the next few weeks, as well as all of our, our teachers.
Thank you. And just, I want to echo what you said. Congratulations to all the students and faculty who participated in MICA this past weekend. I had the privilege of volunteering and was not only impressed, of course, by the performances, but the students that were running the event from the front of the house were like clockwork. So they, they, you know, they were telling the volunteers what to do, they were telling the bands and the, the different groups of orchestras and choirs, as they were coming in, where to go escorting them. So very grateful to those students, as well as the program that creates that kind of leadership, or helps develop that kind of leadership in those students. And then congratulations to the Igo PTO and their, and the performances of Winnie the Pooh Kids this past weekend, which is also a rousing success, and good luck to all the spring athletes, because I think everybody kicked off yesterday or today with their first competitions of the season, so it's nice to be back. And then just a reminder, we are planning on a special meeting next Tuesday, April 12th, at I think 6:00 PM, and the main agenda item is the appointment or the recommendation